We'll call to order the City Council Planning and Zoning Commission Joint Plan Development Workshop Agenda for Monday, April the 14th, 2025 at 4:00 PM. Roll call certification of the City Council. Madam Secretary certify, we do have a call on present as all members are present with the exception of Members Tueman and Cade. Mr. Tueman will be absent for the evening. Ms. Cade is in traffic. I didn't know we had traffic in Pearland. We don't have traffic. Councilmembers can't sit in traffic in Pearland. We need to get them that opticom thing so we can just go out on through. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to you to certify your call.
She must be coming from the west side of town. All members are present, all seven. Thank you.
All right, sounds good. With that, says the comments, Madam Secretary, anything turned in, or were not? So we'll turn to the purpose. Workshop number one, discussion regarding Unified Development Code or UDC update with that. I'll turn it over to staff.
Yeah, thanks Mayor Cole. Thanks Members of Council, P&amp;Z Chair and Commissioners. Thank y'all for taking the time to join us this afternoon. Big project, so the Unified Development Code Workshop, number two, but number one to actually talk about some content. And just a refresher, so for this project, City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission are our steering committee. And so through that, so through the RFQ, we scheduled time so that we could have five actual working workshops to go through the content and actually talk about this as a group and really work through it together. And that way, both the voting bodies for the UDC and a variety of the development items we work on get to have their hands all over this. A couple, just quick things. Sorry, I looked up at Member Carbone. I just want a reminder, so I'm Vance Wiley, I'm the Director of Community. Refresh on that, and any time. But one item just to keep in mind is there's a variety of things at the state legislature this year, and so obviously, we're going to have some ebbs and flows in our conversations that we'll adjust as we need to, as we move through the coming months. But apart from that, please do enjoy the conversation. I hope you were able to take a moment to look at some of the worksheet or the homework. But yeah, thank y'all. Share your experiences. We really are here to make it better. With that, I'll hand it over to Claire.
Thank you so much Vance, and good evening Mayor, Councilmembers and Commissioners. Thanks for having us here today. My name is Claire Hempel, and it is really good to be back here. I'm with Design Workshop, and we are leading the workshop today. Let's go to the next slide. This is an overview of what we want to discuss, starting with a quick recap of the work to be done to date on the UDC, followed by a discussion divided by the topic. And we have six of those, really hoping to make it through all six tonight, so just keep a time check on that since we have two hours. As a reminder, this is the first part of a two-part series. Go to the next slide. All right, so the Design Workshop is working with the Community Development Department and receiving input from multiple bodies, including Council, Planning and Zoning, the Stakeholder Committee, the Technical Advisory Committee, and the Citizens of Pearland. We had a really productive session this morning with the Stakeholder Committee from nine to noon, and you can see some of the boards with the input that are posted around this room. So we had the six topics posted on the wall, a lot of discussion prior to then focusing on the six topics, but we have some great feedback if you get a chance to browse some of the comments that are left there. Next slide. The scope, as a reminder, for the code update is in four phases. The first phase was completed in fall of last year, which was to kick off the project and create the roadmap to get to the end. We are currently in the second phase, which is a deep dive into the code as it exists today. Discussions with staff, city leadership, and stakeholders to understand the issues and opportunities for the code. And summarizing that engagement and research in a memo that will outline the issues and set a path for solving the challenges, and that will come out sometime early summer. We will then move into the development and evaluation of code modifications, or Phase Three. And finally, Phase Four is the adoption of the code updates. Next slide. Since we last met, there have been no changes to the vision statement as we presented in the fall. But to make it really clear, the words at the bottom summarize what the outcomes of the code should be. Streamlined, adaptive, clear, user-friendly, allow for quicker development processes, or speed, simplicity, and certainty. Next slide. The critical success factors are the expected results that must be accomplished for the project to be considered a success. Stemming from the recently adopted, updated Comprehensive Plan as the guide to the code updates, the UDC should be user-friendly and streamlined, flexible, ensure that Pearland's sense of place remains, that our team remains on time and on budget, and finally, that the code is fully supported by the city. Now, to get into the main part of our discussion today, but before we do that, are there any questions or comments before we move on?
Anybody got anything to start off with? There, you guys have anything? I'm quite sure as we go, just real quick, are we going to periodically stop coming through here to let us do the discussion?
Yes, so as we get into each topic, I'll lay out the goal, the initial findings from the team on some issues and challenges. And we can pause there to see if there are any additional to add from these two bodies, and then we'll go into potential recommendations and pause again.
Sounds good.
All right, there are too many topics to cover in one session, so we are breaking them into two groups. Today, we're going to cover land use, the Broadway expansion, and text non-conformities, redevelopment and infill, parking, and food trucks. We will come back on June 9th through 10th, and at that joint work session on Monday, June 9th, we will cover hotel standards, enforcement and administration, landscaping, the plating process, housing, and signage and wayfinding. Next slide. Again, today, we will focus on land uses, the expansion of Broadway, redevelopment and infill, parking, and food trucks. A workbook was provided to this group a couple of weeks ago to start thinking about your specific thoughts on the topics that we'll cover today and in June. So if you made any notes in that document, now's the time to have it ready to refer to. Since we are time limited, I will try to keep each topic discussion to about 15 minutes or so. But of course, I don't want to stop any really great discussion that we're having, and so we'll reassess if we need to. Next slide. Okay, we're going to start off, the first topic today is the UDC structure. The key questions that we want you to consider are, one, what challenges have you encountered when using the document? And two, what could be improved to make it more user-friendly? For each topic, we'll show a summary slide with our understanding of the issues, followed by comments and questions. And then we have a slide that has some initial recommendations for improvements with further opportunity for comments and questions. Next slide. So the identified key issues so far for the structure of the document. The goal here is to regularly review and update the UDC to improve clarity, accessibility, and ease of use, making it simpler for stakeholders to understand and follow. Some of the main issues here are the highly technical language for an everyday user can make it sometimes hard to understand. Difficult for residents, developers, and businesses to fully understand it without having legal or planning expertise. The second issue is a need for visual aids to illustrate concepts. And the third point is redundancy in procedures. So sometimes the references to procedures and approval processes in the UDC are either duplicative or distributed across the document. The next point is insufficient cross-referencing or outdated information. If related regulations are scattered across different sections without clear cross-references, users may miss key requirements. And parts of the code may be outdated or contradict each other, which leads to confusion or misinterpretation. And finally, the last point that we have, and then I'll open it up for comment, is the lack of online search feature or properly indexed sections. Meaning, the online version of the UDC is a PDF and doesn't have functional search feature, nor is it properly indexed, making it difficult for users to locate relevant information. So I will pause here and see if anyone has anything to add.
We'll open up to the Commissioners first.
I would just say, one of the issues I think staff has had in the past is, from my understanding, is that the amendments to the code can come independently of anything else, or they're looked at, it's an item comes up, it's an emergency, it has to be addressed, and isn't looked at holistically, so I think there needs to be more of a, maybe a semi-annual or annual review process that looks at that. So there's time to flesh out, is this really a problem, or is this a one-time issue that's addressing somebody? It doesn't really need to be, the code is seldom to be altered, so maybe more formal process for amending the code.
Good comment. I think in the past, it's been, all of a sudden, the market, we see the same thing over and over and over again come in, it's like, okay, we must have a problem there, so let's review it. But having the regularly reviews, I think, is certainly a goal that we want to get to. You got a comment or question?
I do. You have here a need for visual aids to illustrate concepts. You mean, that's an issue you want to get rid of, or?
So today, the UDC contains little to no graphic representation and visual aids, so that would make it easier to understand by adding those.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this portion of it? Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mayor. We did, we went through this during the budget, and when we took a static budget document and then put it online, and that's great until it's not. And like, when I go back and want to reference the budget that we passed, it's, maybe I'm just old, but I want to go find the PDF that that's what the seven of us voted on. And so that's my, I guess, hesitation when we move into something that's more interactive. How do we know that it is the most current? And it's a bigger issue, but I mean, you can search our website now, and you can find contradictory items. And so I guess, I don't know how we saw that, but that's an issue I've seen with the budget. And I'm not saying we shouldn't move in that direction, but how do we navigate that going from way-too-lengthy and complex PDF into something that, well, if you would have clicked here, here, and here, but when staff clicks it, you know, last week, it might be behaving differently than when the citizen clicks it next week, and I don't know. That, and I like the visual aids, I guess that's more, as long as they're right. Because I can see, hey, this picture, you know, we, everybody meant it to say this, but the verbiage says this, so what's right? That's my comment.
All things to look out for. You have something?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with everything that Member Carbone said. I do, I do like, and I want to really encourage us to move towards an online search feature. I share your issue with the budget, especially because it's very live and updated daily with expenses that were done. This, I don't think, is going to be as constantly moving, although I'd like to see us get to a place where what we can see online with the budget is live also. But from the perspective of someone who does look up what are the requirements and tries to have everything together before I bring it into the city to get it done, not being able to look something up is extremely frustrating. And so having the ability to do that, and I'm not going to get into the how, but searchable PDFs are pretty common. Why ours isn't, I don't know, but searchable PDFs are not that unusual, so I really like that. The concern I have with visual aids is figuring out what needs a visual aid and what doesn't, because some things are highly variable depending on your project. And I'd hate to see this document turn into a 10,000-page document because we have a visual aid for every variance of how a portal wall is framed, or how, you know, a road is built, or something like that. So how we figure out what is important to use as a visual aid versus what isn't, I think, is going to be very challenging to come up with. But I do think there is value in having them, but if we can get way down the road on that and create a big behemoth, that becomes impossible to maintain. And so, all of that to say, ultimately, when it comes down to the regular review and maintenance part of it, whatever we create needs to be easily edited, where it doesn't become this extremely difficult process that costs hundreds of thousands of dollars and takes a year to do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. The matrix itself, I think, is on Section Two of the UDC, page 108. I think it starts, I've got it bookmarked on my computer to get there. What I've noticed about that is that when you get to non-residential uses, and I think even on the residential uses, as you scroll to page two or three, the headings don't return, you know, at the top of each page. So you got to scroll back up to see where NS is and all those uses, and then scroll back down to see if it's, you know, a use that's permitted, or CUP, et cetera. So that might help. The other thing I was going to suggest is, in the UDC itself, a key change for me would be that, to give staff more, more power or control isn't the right word I'm trying to use, but be able to make decisions on certain things. The three-to-one rule that we see all the time, land width versus length. Let staff make that decision, and then maybe P&amp;Z can handle, if anybody contests the decision, a negative decision, we can then hear that, instead of every single time, it's a three-to-one lot width ratio exception.
Yeah, I think, kind of weigh in on that. I think as we move forward with the 15% of property either vacant or greatly underutilized, we're going to have more and more variance opportunities, because there's a reason those properties haven't been developed. And it's going to be a variety of things, right? The three-to-one rules, you know, to drainage, to, you know, whatever else is going to be the issue. So I think, moving forward, not to say that we take a step backwards necessarily in our rules and in what we're trying to accomplish, but it's the procedures and how we get there, and that open-mindedness that not every tract of land is equal. I just want to weigh in real quick. So the goal on this particular page, I think, is spot-on. We need to have a regular review and update. We need to, you know, have it written in. And it may be that we go through six or nine months, and there's no changes, but we need to have those regular, you know, schedules we need to go through, make sure there's any, anything coming out of it. You can see over on the right-hand side, after we passed it in 2005, in the next three years, you can see how many updates, you know, there were to it. Obviously, over time, they slowed down a little bit, so I think it's important that we do that. The other thing, and I've often made this comment, this is the Unified Development Code. It's code, meaning it's very hardline. Meaning thou shall have it exactly like this. For example, glass on a building, thou shall have exactly 25%, no less. You can have more, but you can't have any less. And yet, you're putting, you're putting certain things in a bind. Same thing with, and I use parking lot, landscape islands as another example. You got to have a certain percentage in the parking lot at a certain way. And so I'll make this comment. Joe Pearlander, driving down the road, looking at a parking lot with landscape in it, could not tell you the difference between 12%, 15%, or 17%, let alone the average one probably doesn't care the difference between the two. I think they like the visual, and I think they like the spirit of it, but I don't think they care if they found out that it was 11.5% versus 12%. And so, again, all size tract, all tracts are not equal. I think we need to have some guidelines in this document as opposed to hard code on certain things. Because that will allow developer, architects, engineers to maybe not have as many variances on certain types of things. And so I think, and I don't know how you mix the two, but I think those are some comments that might help us in the future, especially if we're talking about parking standards and those types of things, just allow for some nuances. And I get it, most people are going to say, yeah, but as soon as you put a range, they're just going to, they're going to go straight to the minimum, and that's all they're going to do. Not necessarily. We can go across the city, and people do more than the minimum because that's what they want. So I'd like to see us, you know, kind of move in that direction. Stuff in pink here all makes sense. Those are things that we need to do. So I think we're on the right goal, goal pattern here. And Ms. Cade, you had a follow-up?
I do. I want to, it says it lacks an online search feature, properly indexed sections. When you say that, do you mean because it's separated out by chapter online? Because it is searchable. You can hit Ctrl+F once you open it up and search anything you want. What do you mean by that exactly?
Yeah, mostly relating to, as you mentioned, the separation of the chapters, and then the overall user-friendliness of that search function, and the success of that search function, too.
And to what Member Carbone said, I mean, is there a way to have the original document housed somewhere?
Sure.
Always? Because that makes sense to me.
I think, I think the document as it is has reference to any amendments on the page. So if you see something, it's got a tab on it where you can go to the bottom, okay, this section was amended in one of these dates.
Yes, and I would also agree with what Member Byram said about the UDC doesn't get amended or updated nearly as frequently as other documents, but, and then, but yeah, very much so, we can PDF whatever we just amended, and either put that on a link on the website if we need to, and then it'll always be memorialized in Laserfish, which is just our retention software.
And if the next, the new one's not separated out like this, perhaps it would be easier to search as well, if you don't have to know what chapter you go to to find what you're looking for.
And I think the last thing, and we'll move on, is just making sure that the language is of a nature that a business owner or somebody in town can read it and understand it. No offense to engineers and attorneys, but somebody shouldn't have to hire one just to read the code and say, what does this mean? They should be able to at least read it and understand enough to say, this fits my project or not. Ultimately, they may have to hire an engineer or an architect to do something. I get that. They shouldn't have to be able to, inquiring, the language shouldn't be so technical that that's what they have to do. And our connection is going away. Anybody else have something, and we'll move on? Saying no one, we'll move on, Claire.
Great, thank you. Really good comments. We'll go to the next slide. This is Slide 14, and at the bottom right, you can see an example of what a graphic could look like, just to show a general non-name site with a building footprint and parking. So as one example of the kind of graphics you might see. So some potential recommendations or opportunities here for this topic are, one, simplifying the language and improving clarity with updated definitions, plain language, and summaries for each major section. Integrating graphics throughout, or where necessary, flow charts and interactive tools throughout the UDC that help clarify the intended outcomes of development standards. Third is streamlining approval processes and consolidating enforcement processes by offering a step-by-step guide for permits, site plan approvals, and rezoning applications, reducing redundancy by simplifying procedures and removing unnecessary steps and implementing checklists where possible to ensure applicant compliance before application submission. The next one is improving cross-referencing, and finally, enhancing document navigation and searchability to allow users to locate relevant information effectively. I'll pause here for any comments or questions.
Chairman? Anything? Council?
Thank you, Mayor. On the, on page, or Slide 14, on the third bullet point, streamline approval processes. I think our process right now has gone through, I guess, somewhat of a streamlined process. What ideas, what are your thoughts on streamlining it further? Because I mean, right now, you get before P&amp;Z have a hearing there, come to council, and then have a hearing there as well. What are, what are the ideas? What are the concepts there?
Sure, we had some discussion on that this morning with our Stakeholder Committee. We heard about, during the approval process, there may be some conflicting ideas about the direction that the site development permit might take. And so there's probably some alignment that could happen there. And Ali and Trana, did you have anything to add?
I think to an earlier point, if there are simple applications that could be expedited through staff or P&amp;Z, that was another point that was put forth. That's another meaning behind the streamlining approval process.
When you say application, as far as right now, you fill out a form, you submit it to P&amp;Z, it gets put into the cycle, it's, you know, where you submitted versus what meeting you attend, what are you talking about there?
Simpler CUP applications are ones that are, we would need to analyze by right uses, and we'll get into that a little bit more. But if there are any procedures that could be approved by staff, we would love to explore that.
And Member Cozef, if I may, I think, I think one option, and this has been passed for a couple of years ago, but there was a bill passed that not all the Platts that go to P&amp;Z have to do so anymore. And so this is for our next workshop, but I think globally, about the process, what doesn't have to go to P&amp;Z legally anymore that still does? That we just legally have the option, and just more to flesh that out and say, hey, these Platts, it's all staff approval, and are we comfortable with that?
So are you saying, like, in a pre-development meeting, that you would say, hey, this is, this is fine, move on?
Well, they would still have to plat the property, like, for this specific example, they would still plat the property, it just wouldn't go to P&amp;Z.
Right.
And so the recordation process, I mean, it would save, it would save weeks, if not a month.
Yeah, but I mean, I mean, we had facade requirements that got removed at some point through the legislature that's no longer there also. I mean, I understand that the legislation can come in and change the process.
Yeah, I'd be interested just to know, just streamlining approval process, whether it's approving through for permits, or a zone change, CUP, anything that speeds up the process, I think, is good for everyone. And it'd be interesting to see and know, you know, what that looks like. Right now, I don't even know, I don't have it in front of me, but I don't know what our calendar looks like. So if I submitted something today, how far out are we? And my question would be, is there something we can be doing to make that shorter? So, and again, there's a, there's a drop-dead date always that, you know, I can't, I couldn't submit something today and be on next Monday's agenda, I get that. But is there, is there things in the process that can speed up the process even on the front end of things? And again, I don't know how far out we are. I know zone changes and PDs are long, are different than a CUP. But again, that would, it's probably a matter of staff, and it's probably a matter of their bandwidth to be able to handle some of those on the front end.
Yes, sir, and then the legal posting requirements as well. Did you want to go with the calendar?
Yeah, so just to name a couple of things off the top of the head. Conditional use permits run about 45 days, which, considering staff review time back and forths with applicants, that may not be one that we necessarily touch because we've already narrowed that approval timeline down, and all kind of had consensus in the 2018, 2019 time period on that. Of course, not saying that it's off the table, just an example of something that's already been working and works fine. Zone changes take about three months, so 90 days roughly from application turnout, turn in to that second and final hearing by turn in to, uh, that second and final hearing by city council. Um, you know, uh, plan developments are really dependent on how much work the applicants have put in beforehand, uh, or how much work they have after the initial workshop to get it to where they can actually turn it in. Um, and then Platts, uh, as we've kind of already mentioned, uh, those run out about on a 30-day timeline, uh, and that's if they're perfect and, and have everything turned in, um, and aren't requiring, uh, additional bodies to, uh, review it, such as BTD4, Tech Dodd, or someone else.
So Martin, on the, on the Platts itself, uh, what's the shot clock from the state? Is it, is it 30 days?
30 days right now.
Okay, and, and so we're already operating under the, is, is there, I think the legislature's looking at something different on a shot clock, but I think it, I think it's to permits, uh, it's not Platts, I think it's on permit request, and again, I think the onus is always going to be on making sure that the permit is correct. So, um, real quick.
Yeah, you know, I've always wondered why we have to, to, uh, vote on the Platts, even, even city council voting on the Platts and stuff. To me, that's a waste of time because we can't turn them down. We've got to that point, at least P and Z can, I don't know about y'all, as far as, yeah, yeah, exactly. And, uh, so, you know, why, it looks like to me that that, that would be something that staff, they're the ones that are educated in it, they can go through it and do it, and we should never even see it. For that fact, unless there's some type of legality on it, why should y'all even see it?
Yeah, I think that's what Vance was alluding to, I think state law used to require governing body to, uh, council hadn't voted on Platts in probably 30 years, so we delegated that to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and so that was because state law required it. Um, and then in recent years, tho, those have, those have changed. So I agree with you, it, it's technical, meets all the rules or regulations, and if it doesn't, we know it doesn't, if somebody passes a plat that doesn't meet all the rules or regulations, I mean, you can go back into that history and you can see, okay, who approved this without, you know, proper approval, so there's a, there's a clear paper trail on all that. You got a question, Mr. Byram?
Yeah, when you talk about on this slide, uh, interactive tools, um, are, are y'all looking at AI or, or other softwares out there where somebody could go in and say, what do I need to apply for a zone change? And it says, this is what you need, is that kind of what you're talking about?
Could be, yes, we want to look, um, when we get to the point where we're proposing recommendations for the different kind of softwares you might consider, um, AI will certainly be part of that because of the, the technology that's here and here to stay. Um, but we'll have, uh, a lot of the conversation we've had tonight about what you would be looking for is good for us to hear, so when we put options in front of you of where you might want to go, and the, the searchability functions, that's, that's useful.
I, I would say where, anything, if you're thinking of it from the perspective of a property owner, whether I'm wanting to build a home on it, or develop a commercial building, or rezone it, or whatever, having the ability to go in and kind of utilizing AI to describe what you want to do, and see if it can give you some preliminary information, it's not going to be perfect, but at least they have something to come to staff with and say, this is what I understand, I'm on the right track. Yeah, I think that could improve the, streamline the process a bit, where staff's not starting from zero when somebody walks in the door.
Well, even, I think, you know, there are tools out there now that are AI-driven, that have upload all the code, upload all of our rules and regulations, the UDC and everything else, somebody could actually submit plans through that portal, um, and it would tell them within minutes if it meets UDC, and it would flag what it doesn't, that might end up being something that you got to go back and redo, or it might be a legitimate variance request, you know? Um, you know, and so that's, uh, I think those are, uh, worthwhile, it's just question is, you know, what does those cost, and then what's the benefit coming out of it? Um, and, and certainly, I think what, what I, we've been talking about for years, even with the CUP process, uh, is, is predictability. The more we can build into our processes and procedures that there's some predictability to the person that's spending the money to do it, I think the better off we're going to be, and the better off our, our, our customers, our citizens are going to be when they go to, go to access the system. They, they may still have to engage somebody to get some technical plans done, or they may still have to do those kind of things. And I think if we can, if they know that there's predictability of getting what they need to get done, done, that's going to be better in the long run. So, I, I think, so when I see interactive tools and, uh, those types of things, I think of, how can we do that?
Uh, Mayor, I just, um, streamlining, streamlining the approval process, I, um, we have such a little bit of developable, developable, developable land left, sorry. I mean, I would like to slow down the approval process, I know that's going to be super unpopular, and I'll probably be the only one that feels that way, but, um, we had the workshop about how, um, low we were on parks, um, compared to other peer cities, and developing, UDC is all, not, the stakeholders on the UDC is not just developers, it's other people, it's, it's private residents as well. So, yes, simplify the language, improve clarity, but just to streamline approval processes so we can get more things developed, I, I'm not.
I don't, I don't think anybody has suggested that, I didn't suggest that, and I didn't hear anybody else suggest that.
All right, I just.
And if, if there's a piece of property, I know the piece of property across the street's owned by the city, but let's just assume it was owned by Joe Smith down the street, and it's his own general business, somebody wants to come in and put a general business category right there tomorrow, they have a right to do that, and, and that's what we're talking about, if somebody has a right to do something, they, we should streamline the process to allow them to do that. Now, zone change and those kind of things, that's what we're talking about, where can we, if we need to, but we're still going through the process, the state law requires public hearings, state law requires notifications, we're not changing any of that, there's no hint at changing that. So, uh, now, state legislature wants to go around all that with some of their laws, they want to make mandated certain types of uses on property, like multifamily on any business category, by right. We don't want that, so, Martin?
Yeah, just, Mayor, uh, thank you. On streamlining approval processes, I think one of the areas where we've had some real success is delineating certain uses and having certain performance standards for those uses. Um, I mean, if you've noticed, uh, over the past two years, the amount of CBD requests that have come before y'all has dropped off to nothing. Um, and it's because we have those regulations in there, and it's meeting that expectation for business owners who are coming in, saying, oh, this is what the process is, and this is where we don't want them to be, you know, that, that has helped to kind of set that bar and ensure that, you know, where you are getting them are places that you want them to be. So, having that, that is a, a form of streamlining an approval process is also ensuring that people who are coming know what the rules are going to be.
Thank you, Martin, now did work on that for car washes and, thank you.
Mr. Byram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you give me, um, some more information about consolidating enforcement sections? What do you mean by that?
So currently, um, the, throughout the UDC, there are references to enforcement, um, as well as processes for approval, and so, uh, just for ease of use for particularly those who are enforcing the code, we'd like to just consolidate all of that in one section, so it's easier to find, um, just a more predictable, organized place for, um, anything related to code enforcement.
Thank you.
Mr. Cozette, do you have a follow-up?
Oh, I just wanted to help Member Cade on your, your park statement, it's a little erroneous, um, because the one thing that that, uh, slide or whatever you want to call it, describing our parks, doesn't include all the parks that are in our neighborhoods. When you include that, it pumps us way up in the list, so there is a little bit difference on what our park situation is in the city of Pearland.
Probably more than doubles.
Commissioner Hendricks had a comment.
Okay, so one of the most confusing thing that I deal with in the world of engineering and development every day is explaining the difference between a plat and a topo survey or boundary survey, and I think that you guys need to pull, you can leave the plat stuff in subdivision, but it needs to have its own category under the main page, because no one knows what a plat is, I have to explain that maybe once or twice a week to someone who's a business owner who wants to develop their own site. And where we sometimes run into questions is when someone has platted a commercial property, when do they need to replat when they subdivide it? Can it be subdivided just by meets and bounds? That gets confusing, and when they cut off another tract, if it, because some cities don't require it, even though they've cut off another tract to ride away access, right? So there needs to be like a flow chart of when, so that's a good exhibit, and then pulling it out and explaining that so that a land, a, a business owner or whoever's going to develop can go to that category and see a visual between a topo boundary survey and a visual between a plat. Usually you have to explain it, they just don't get it, like the difference, so we need a really good, um, I guess, section for that to break it down.
That's helpful, thank you. I can imagine almost like a, a yes/no diagram, that you want to do this, go here, and then, yeah.
Yeah, because apparently like, some cities, it's up to them whether they want somebody to replat a commercial tract or residential, it's so, I, it's confusing to me, I have to call up the reviewer and say, are you going to make me do it or not? Or whatever, but for sure, just even the basic, even a homeowner, like a resident, um, if we tell them, hey, the city's making you get a plat, they don't understand why.
Mm-hmm.
They don't understand that sometimes that's just legal uses of your land, and there could be easements, those things don't always show up on a topo survey, and they need to kind of get that understanding, so that'll be extremely helpful.
That's great, thank you.
Any other follow-up? All right, I think we can move on.
Okay. Um, really quickly on this side, these are just some examples of how the city of Frisco in Texas has structured their site plan review procedures with a clear, easy-to-understand graphic. And McAllen, Texas, has graphic examples to illustrate concepts like lot area, coverage, and setbacks, just so you can see a visual of that. All right, we'll move on to our next topic, which is land use. So keep these questions in mind, what are the biggest challenges you have faced with the CUP process in Pearland, that's conditional use permit, and which land use applications are most often approved, denied, and what trends or patterns have emerged? Next slide. So why is this topic important? With the city's land uses, this is one of the main tools that you use to achieve community development goals. By right uses make the process move along more quickly and lead to predictability in the permitting process, which is one of the things a developer looks at when deciding where to build. Land use topics included in this section include CUPs, review and approval processes, land use regulations, and permitted uses. Next slide. For your reference, we indicate the section of the code where you can find this in today on this slide, where each slide that will, you see code inquiry, you'll, um, see where you can find this section today, the relevant mention from the comprehensive plan, and which rec, what is recommended as an action item, the review of CUPs and zone changes. So the top right too, if you have your, um, workbook from, uh, that was provided a couple of weeks ago, you can find this topic in pages one through 41. So the overall goal for this topic is to expand functionality to enable desired land uses while avoiding development limitations or efficiencies. Next slide. So the identified key issues for land uses include, one, lack of flexibility in the land use regulations, that's the land use matrix may be over categori, over categorized, limiting developer innovation and interpretation, certain districts may prohibit mixed use or multifamily housing despite city goals for walkable transit friendly development, and in some cases, this may also disincentivize high-quality development by encouraging adherence to the standard set in the UDC. Under CUP processes, too many CUPs create restrictive zoning and an unclear approval criteria process in process. Without these clear guidelines, different staff members, planning commissioners, or council members may interpret the same CUP request differently. Staff and board time, um, is needed, so although CUPs are a small part of the review process, some CUP applications attract the most attention taking up board and staff time. And then finally, there's a lengthy and expensive approval process. The city is investing resources in the CUP, CUP review process, with, through individual review staff, and then by P and Z, and finally by council through a hearing, which strains budgets and staff capacity. So here, I'll pause and stop for comments and questions.
Open up for any questions, Mr. Commissioner?
I just think the main issue is, um, if you're going to put the same conditions on a use every time, you don't need to go through the CUP process, just set those as requirements for the use. If every car wash is going to get approved, if it has this much landscaping and the entrance is this way towards the neighborhood and the, and the vacuums are over here, then just set that as a design requirement in the code and save everybody the time. And so I think a lot of times we have these, um, these items that we look at a lot of times from, why is it even on the CUP list, I may, it doesn't seem to make sense, like say gems in certain areas, we've had that issue. Something like car wash, where you, you could say, okay, I understand why we want to look at those, but if, if, if in the end, our fundamental answer is always going to be yes, with basic conditions that we could have told you, you know, 45 days ago, then what's the purpose of the process?
It's good feedback, and I think that's a fundamental question that, that this process will flesh out, is, do we want to continue with the CUPs, and if yes, what goes to a CUP? Um, you know, right now, pretty much all auto-related uses go through a CUP, and then I guess the question is, is that, is that the right thing? Um, you know, even to a, I guess, an auto parts store may be different, but if, if, you know, if it's a retail store, why does that have to go through a, a CUP process as, as an example? I get the others, though, I, I, I'm not necessarily in favor of doing away with the CUP process for car wash, for example. I, I think there's a, I think there's a level of scrutiny there that, that's, that's worthy of having, uh, the conversation around it. Um, you know, it, it's, it's kind of interesting, we haven't had a liquor store CUP in two-plus years? Okay? Because the marketplace finally decided it's where it needed to be. If somebody goes out of business or whatever, then that's going to be part of the marketplace, and if we open up a certain area, and maybe, maybe something will come back, but it's, it's interesting, um, now, vape shops, they, they went away for other reasons, but, uh, but, you know, but the CUP process allows for the market, they get to come in and share what it is, but I, I agree, John, that there needs to be a set template on what our requirements are, and then if there's an exception to the person next to them or behind them or whatever, we might need to put different conditions on based on what might be there. But I agree, we need to have something like that, but I think if it's the use, that's up to the council, if y'all are good with just saying carte blanche to whatever, same thing with gas stations, you know, do we want a gas, because if, if we say no to gas stations, we'll have a gas station on every corner in about 45 days, so, um, you know, and, and, and so I think part of this process will vet that out. Any other questions? Mr. Byram?
Well, to your point, I think it comes down to, why do you have a CUP process in the first place? Right? Is, if it's to control the intensity of a certain type of business in the community, that's one thing. To your example about a car wash, if it's going to have all these parameters around it, you got this much fencing and this much landscaping and this many entrances, and even go in and say, and it can't be within four miles of another one, then make that part of it and move on. Right? So, I, I think that there's a bigger fundamental question of why is it in a CUP, a particular thing, why are we using CUP in the first place? And then streamlining the number of things that are in a CUP, because I think sometimes we, we say it's a CUP just so we can say no, because we don't really want them. You know, well then, just say we're not going to put those in our city, and we're having all these meetings and put them through 45 days and everything else. One of the things we've talked about several times, going to the lengthy and expensive, or even unclear, is if it's going to be a no, just let it be a no, and don't put them through the process. I think that's something we need to really look at through all of this, while we're spending the effort and the manpower and the money to build this, if there's certain things that are just going to be no, then just tell them no. things that are just going to be no, then just tell them no. Don't put P&amp;Z through it. Don't put council through it. Don't put them through it.
I don't know if you get consensus to do that or not, Ms. Cade. I think that's, that's the fundamental question. Like I said, I, I, CUPs are there to, not to limit the market, but to limit proliferation of certain businesses. So, because if you don't have a CUP, yeah, the market will get there, but at what damage? How many will actually be built before the market says, oh, now we've got three that are, you know, empty and decaying? And it's going to have to be completely torn down. Like, in that case, a gas station or a car wash, it has to be completely torn down and, and the land returned to do anything, you know, different. You're not going to retrofit, uh, most of them. So Darryl, you have a comment? Yeah. And, and so I, I, I don't, I don't want to say no to car washes. I don't want to say yes to every car wash. I think the CUP par, uh, process on something like that makes sense. Um, and, and, and just like multifamily, you know, we, we, we can and will say yes, but not in every case. So it, it gives us the option to look at it on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you, Mayor. So when I was going through the land use, I think it's like twenty-four or more, and that's not including the CUP. So I guess my question is, there's a lot of duplication, like under GP, GC, OP. So is there any way we can look at consolidating but continue to look at CUPs as well?
I think what you'll find is those uses are allowed either by right or whatever in multiple categories, right? And, and so it's, it's the matrix that was deducted or reduced into those pages. I don't know if you can do it any differently or not. A question, are we going to go through each one of those categories? Are we just going to like, give you what we think ought to be changed? Because we'll, I don't, we won't be able to get through that tonight.
Yeah, I think just, uh, going over the highlights would be the answer.
So I had a, I had a question about the, uh, the mixed-use areas. Um, and, and when they were created, they were created because we annexed towards the west and we annexed things that, um, were different uses against, you know, next door to each other. But over time, it'd be interesting to know, like, uh, Garden Road mixed-use area, Cullen, uh, mixed-use area, is it, do we still need it? Or are we at a point where we can say, Cullen mixed-use, this is a GB area or a GC area, and let's, let's, let's make it a, a category rather than a mix of uses? You know, when those were annexed twenty years ago or twenty-five years ago or whatever, you know, these different areas were, like I said, you had a house and a business next door to each other, and you wanted them to coexist. So we created those mixed uses to allow that. So my fundamental question is, are we ready to move away from those and see what happens? I don't know. And I, it's, you know, we have one on tonight that's, that's in the Cullen mixed-use that's looking for a zone change. And so, you know, if we just said we're going to go to GB or whatever, then maybe he comes in, gets his CUP, and we, we move on. I don't know. Ms. Cusick?
So I, I was curious to know, similar kind of what you were talking about there on, uh, slide nineteen, where we have existing uses and the, and the new place types. You know, are we going to be coming up with, uh, instead of GB, GC, are we going to be coming up with, uh, new classifications? How, how is that going to work moving forward?
I think this gets to, um, your question earlier, too, about some of the redundancy between categories. I think one of the things that we're considering is how those categories, um, might be consolidated and simplified and certainly align with the way that land uses are described in the comprehensive plan. Um, so I don't know what that would mean as far as what the, the names of those districts or the way those are described. I think they would still be, um, there would be some alignment with the zoning code that you're all used to using, but certainly, um, some interest in collapsing and, and simplifying to align with the comprehensive plan, like that diagram on slide nineteen.
Okay. So, so that's talking about streamline and where it would simplify that. Because then, uh, kind of getting in the weeds a little bit, um, I, I'm familiar with a, a business owner that is in landscape business. Let's say Mayor Cole hired him to landscape his yard. He could, the piece of property he was in could run his business, but as soon as he wanted to sell Mayor Cole a plant on the property, he had to get a CUP to do that. Um, so when we get into conflicting things like that, to me, it's an onerous when we get into, they can go sell the plant and install it, but the customer can't walk in and purchase it in a retail application. So, you know, those type things with, when you look at GB, GC, M1, NS, uh, OP, um, hopefully we can eliminate those type, uh, I guess, conflicts, if you want to call it that, to where it makes it where it's more simpler.
Yes. We'll make sure to take a note. We're taking notes on that, and we'll come back at a later date with recommendations for how those zoning categories realign.
Okay. Kate?
Um, I'm sure this is going to come as a huge surprise, but I don't want to change the CUP process. I also don't think that the notification process is adequate. The two-hundred-foot notification and the little sign with the phone number that you can't see as you fly by is, is not adequate. And what, what's the newspaper notification? Darren, what, what is the, or Martin, somebody? I, I think there's a legal, a legal thing on that.
So it's fifteen days prior to the meeting.
In what newspaper?
Our official record newspaper, which is the Pearland Reporter.
Pearland Reporter, yeah.
Who, and where is that circulated? I don't get it.
I, I know it's online. I know that we get-
Which is why we require the sign.
It's in that, it, the notification process is, is inadequate.
So we've taken a, a few attempts at the sign, uh, based off some recommendations from, uh, council members and past council, uh, adding the QR code, adding, uh, a plain language, uh, what the request is. Um, you know, fully recognize that, um, traffic, doing traffic speeds, it's difficult to read the sign, but also knowing that we've got the public, uh, hearing page and that it, that's a, an ever-growing, uh, an ever-changing, uh, list of applications out there. Um, you know, we're, we're working to make that more accessible for everyone.
Councilmember Kate, also, I just want to confirm, are you also, do you also believe that the state law requiring the notification of property owners within two-hundred feet of the zone area, of the zoned property proposed to be zoned, that's inadequate as well?
I do.
Okay.
Two-hundred feet.
Real, real quick, so what would be adequate?
I'm trying to visualize what two-hundred feet is. Like what, from me to Rick? I mean, help.
No. It, it's the, it's the length of this building. Maybe a little more.
Oh, well, football field is three-hundred feet.
Correct.
I mean, that's, I don't know, but the problem, so if you-
So here's, here's, here, and I'll just, here's the issue I have with it. State law says two-hundred, and they want to change it to five-hundred. Let them change it to five-hundred, and we will change to five-hundred. I think the, the moment we arbitrarily say, we're going to make it, instead of two-hundred, we're going to double it, and we're going to go to four-hundred, or we're going to go to five-hundred. The day we say that is what our standard is, then the person at, at, at five-hundred-and-fifty feet goes, well, why didn't you go ahead and make it one more closer so I would have gotten it? And that, and that goes to five-hundred, it goes to six-hundred, it goes to a thousand, and then the next thing you know, you're two miles over. I mean, there's bills in the legislature right now that are looking to require everything within fifteen-hundred feet. And making it, uh, where you got to pay for the mail certified. So all of the notifications have to go certified mail. Now you're talking about a zone change for somebody coming in to get a zone change, and this might be one of our mom and pops. So instead of paying a thousand dollars for that zone change, it might be ten thousand dollars for a zone change. It might be five thousand dollars for a zone change because of the notification requirement. So if we increase it, and I'm not against increasing and making it more transparent, but when we say we're going to go something beyond state law, we've just made it arbitrary. And then somebody could argue, well, you could have made it arbitrary fifty more feet, and I got a, I got notified. So it's a slippery slope, and, and what we decide, not saying that, that we wouldn't decide that. Got to be real careful what we do. Because that's the reason why we've always said we're going to follow state law.
Mayor, if I could just point out, too, I, I know there are other cities who have, I've worked for other cities who've increased the mail out. Because I think the goal is always, you have a public hearing and, and you send out forty or fifty letters and three people show up, right? So how do we get more people? And so the idea was you send out more letters. You don't get more people. Um, you just have more people who take that letter and, and they either look at it or they just toss in the trash, right? So it's about how do you get through the noise? I think adding the QR code, having a very detailed website that shows all the information, there's other avenues. But statistically, just throwing more letters out there, because now you're getting a letter that says, okay, you know, three blocks away, this is happening. Well, that doesn't affect me. I'm down here. Um, and, and so just, just from an experience of, of working in a city that we've tried that, uh, we, we did not get any increased response or increased participation in the process.
And along that same line, I've heard complaints about, well, why is it the Thursday before, or, you know, whatever timeline it is. All of us sitting at this dice right here get the entire packet Thursday before meeting, and it's a lot more reading than one notification.
And that just goes to the notification of two weeks, fifteen days, fourteen days, whatever the notification is, then by the time it gets in the mail and gets to them, and we're trying to streamline some processes, but at the same time, we've got, we've got state law requirements. Uh, and like I said, I'm, I'm not, I'm not against changing the, the two-hundred, but we need to have a rationale for it, whatever that number is, not just-
Arbitrary.
Because we, yeah. Good, good point. Any other questions on this?
Yes, there, Mayor Cole, and I did one on the, on the CUP part of the conversation. I think we had it at a much deeper level than I was ready for, in a way. But, um, also, it's not necessarily about eliminating it, I don't think, in any capacity, as much as it is the simplistic part of should office warehouse be a CUP request in GB, for example. I think that's something we've seen recently. We've had different discussions about it. And just to give an example, we've seen in the past few weeks, month. Um, so it can, not necessarily about cutting the process, obviously where we can make uh, uses allowed by right, and we're comfortable, we should do that. But also, you know, what uses, and I think to member Byron's point again, um, hey, is it just a no in general? Or is it, no, this can be in GB by CUP? I mean, it's that level as well.
Yeah, for example, I did like, um, drive, car driving schools. Why is a CUP required for driving? I get it because of the vehicles in and out, but, I mean, it's in an office area where vehicles come in and out.
Because it's automotive.
Yeah, because it's automotive. And, and so again, those are ones that we can, and those are in my notes. So, uh, we'll move on. Thank you, Claire.
All right. Let's go on to the next slide. So some initial recommendations on this topic of land uses are, one, to simplify the land use matrix under larger categories by zoning districts. This minimizes contradictions and reduces the need for constant updates, thereby leaving room for developer interpretation, innovation, and flexibility. Next, aligning with the future land use plan. So review and update the land use matrix to reclassify common conditional uses as permitted uses where appropriate, and remove CUP where zoning districts do not align with future land uses identified in the comprehensive plan. Next is minimize the overuse of CUPs. So we would garner feedback from the city and council on CUPs, like today, um, but this can be an ongoing conversation. And working with staff to understand what has historically been approved to be allowed by right. Avoid requiring CUPs for uses that are incompatible with a district's purpose. And finally, streamline the approval processes by expediting review process, uh, review for simpler requests or by right categories. Perhaps there's a clear reference to digital tracking for applications submitted via the online portal. Clear standards for approval that are consistently upheld or followed through, and then allowing staff or planning and zoning approval where possible. I'll pause here for comments and questions.
Do you have any questions on this? Karen?
Ju- just to say, I agree with quite a bit of that. For CUPs, I wrote in my notes, just, we have enough of them. I didn't add any CUPs in any of the categories. I just think we have already too many CUPs, and some uses I took out, so.
Any questions, comments here? I think we're on the right track. I don't think we want to eliminate them, but I think we want to bring them down. Does it make sense? Move on.
All right. We'll go to our third topic, which is the Tex- dot Broadway expansion. So some questions to consider here are, what amenities should be prioritized after the roadway widening? So that could be lighting, landscaping, screening, signage, or something else? And are we creating compliance standards to the most common scenarios or the most affected properties? And as a reminder, this is about seventeen properties along Broadway that are, um, affected. And third, could the city simplify the process for variances for code compliance upgrades? Next slide. So with the loss of right-of-way along Broadway, the existing properties with businesses will need to come up to code with less land area. So this process will help prioritize what is important to the city along the front edge, and owners can proactively plan for adjustments. Next slide. The overall goal with this topic is to address non-conformities in projects under Tex- dot involving eminent domain through a structured approach to ensure compliance with legal, engineering, and community standards and/or prioritizations. Next slide. The identified key issues are, first, no, there are no clear guidelines for bringing non-conforming structures up to code today, meaning many properties that come in for a permit will be made non-conforming because of eminent domain. Some non-conformities will be allowed to remain, while others will need to be updated and brought up to compliance. Next is properties face development challenges complying with minimum setbacks or minimum lot size after the expansion of the roadway. Therefore, owners are left with smaller sites with no, quote, compact site development standards that are clearly outlined. Third, the landscape buffer requirement articulated in the UDC is not currently being met and requires revised language to ensure appropriate screening methods, thirty feet. Next is the loss of parking and site layout issues. The Tex- dot expansion creates issues related to meeting existing parking minimum requirements and access management issues like fire lane, drive aisle, or stacking distance for drive-throughs, deliveries, and drop-offs. New driveways are not allowed, creating no internal circulation flexibility through, uh, through, through shared access to easements. Sorry about that. And finally, signage restrictions. The UDC requires signage setbacks that will not comply with the expansion of ten feet. I'll pause here for any thoughts, comments, or questions?
Yeah, so, uh, I, I'm, I'm going to walk through this, uh, a little bit because I'm, I'm, I'm fearful of what I'm hearing, uh, coming out of this, um, and the absolute red tape that people on Broadway are going to have to go through to bring their properties into compliance. This is the first I've heard that post-project, that we are going to come in and force people to bring their property into compliance. If, if that's what we're attempting to do, I think we'll have major discussion at this dice tonight, uh, to take that out of it. Um, I've had comments with, with legal and others that through no fault of their own, these non-compliance issues are happening. Okay? Secondly, uh, just like the landscape buffer requirement is not currently being met, correct? There's areas along Broadway that doesn't do that because when it developed, it didn't exist. There are other areas, we changed the rules, and so now they, uh, those areas do meet it. So-
Mayor Cole, if I may?
I think we just need to be real careful where we're headed here.
Yeah, and I, and I think for this one, Claire, just hearing that comment, maybe we'll go to the next slide so they can see the, uh, and maybe just a poorly written sentence there. Um, you'll see here on the recommendations, this is about creating, creating rules that are cognizant of that impact. And so, and Claire, maybe if you wanted to change this, so you can see that if, then this, this, then this situation.
All right, I'll cover this. So add it, we're, a recommendation would be to add a UDC section with standards to bring, um, Broadway properties more into compliance. Next, establishing specific- Next, establishing specific criteria for the Broadway Street corridor. Following the Tech dot widening project, create a separate corridor designation with criteria that are appropriate for Broadway Street, and could be applied to other corridors in the future. Also, creating flexibility based on the level of impact through a couple of different options here. If not X, then Y. So if not, then Z scenarios, where there is a threshold to comply with revised code. And better site design standards are still necessary to articulate landscape, screening, lighting, signage, and revised setbacks. And then finally, staff approval in some instances, where staff could be utilized, staff approval could be utilized to expedite processes for properties that are close to compliance with updated standards, particularly as it relates to signage, like relocation and pole height and non-controversial signage. I'll pause there.
So that's gonna help clean it up some. Here's my concern, and I've had this concern for, since the day the project was announced it was coming, with a non-conformance of use. So I've got a strip center owner, he's got two million dollars worth of debt on the strip center. This project's gonna come through, he's gonna lose, you know, forty parking spaces, he's gonna lose landscaping, he's gonna lose signage. His front setback is now not in compliance, his parking's not in compliance, his landscape's not in compliance, and everything else. He rocks along there and he's fine, strip center burns, total loss. Remember, he's got two million dollars worth of debt on it. And I just want to make sure, whatever we do, we capture, this is not his fault. Okay? And I don't want, I want to make sure that we have a city that says, you are correct, you can rebuild as-is. Because if we don't allow that, his bank's gonna call his note immediately. You're gonna cause financial ruin to somebody, and I don't want to be the city that causes that. I don't think we want to be the city that causes that. So I want to make sure, I like having a UDC section that calls it out. I just want to make sure that, because staff's gonna turn over, council's gonna turn over, P&amp;Z's are gonna turn over, and twenty years from now, something's gonna happen with one of those properties, and nobody on staff or here is going, I don't know what you're talking about. I just want to make sure that we're heading down that path that we do. Mr. Coza?
I'm gonna follow up with the real-life example of that. On South Main and Third Street, there was a restaurant there by the name of Roberts. The gentleman that owned the property sold the right-of-way to the city of Pearland. And he looked at it as, and I guess the city did as well, as what the dollar per square foot of the piece of property was. He made an error in assuming that the building was gonna be demolished by the city. And up popped the rabbit, it wasn't the case. So, he's down fighting his taxes one year, and the county's saying, you owe for the building, and you owe for the home that was behind it, that also was in the easement that the city purchased. And he said, no, the city bought it. Because the land underneath it was part of the building. And he went round and round, I don't know what the resolve was, but he ended up demolishing the home, and the building that the restaurant was in still sits there today. So if we don't notify landowners that when right-of-way's taken, that there are financial setbacks for that happening? Because they need to negotiate that with Tech dot, or whoever the party is, so that they get paid proportionally, and not just per square foot. Because I think it's wrong when that happens. Because this gentleman, the amount of money he got for the strip of land that he sold to the city, didn't cover the cost of demolishing the home.
If I could just weigh in on that, that all depends on the details, because when we acquire property like that, there's an appraisal. And that appraisal calculates on a per-square-foot basis, but it also applies a damage to the remainder. And so, the details are important, because we've had other people argue the same thing. But if they looked at their appraisal, they'll see they were compensated for the cost to demolish the property. They just didn't realize it was in their compensation. So, I'm not saying that's the case in this particular instance, but we've had other individuals do the same thing. But reading the appraisal that they get and agreeing to a price, that's usually included in that cost. So I want to make sure.
But when that dollar amount doesn't cover the cost to demolish in it, that's a setback.
If, it all depends on facts, and I haven't seen that since I've been here, so that would surprise me.
Mr. Chairman, we have a couple of Planning and Zoning Commission members that.
So, I don't understand why Tech dot wouldn't replant the landscape. Does anybody have an answer to that? Like, I don't think that should be on the business owner.
So, and I'll use that real quick, and I wouldn't have a familiarity with the example you gave, Member Coza, but one nod to our City Manager's Office and our Economic Development Corporation is through the widening of Tech dot, we've actually reached out through phone and certified letter to all fourteen of the significantly impacted properties. I think we've met with about half of them, to bring them up to speed and share with them, hey, these are the codes that you're gonna be looking at when you come back in. Make sure in those negotiations, you ask for dollars for those things. So one, at least, hopefully that's a positive step, customer service-wise, related to this topic. But then, to your comment, Commissioner, I mean, if the property owners don't know, I mean, Tech dot's gonna come in and essentially just saw cut down that property line, and they're.
That's, we're going through that on five eighteen, they are compensating you for the landscaping. So you're responsible on replacing that landscape. But they are compensating it.
So, forgive me, there's a little bit to unwrap here, as my previous employment is, brain is going haywire. I guess first and foremost, I don't necessarily understand why we have to have a separate section for this. Because we have the project, right-of-way is going to be bought, and it then gets handled either via variance or some other way, shape, or form, whether the property is redevelopable or not, which I agree with you, Mayor Cole. But then, after the fact, at some point in time, you then have vacant land again with a new widened road, and the established processes and setbacks and criteria should then be in effect.
I think it's more than just the fourteen or seventeen impacted properties where the whole business is being taken. The entire, especially from Cullen to McLean, both sides of the road are gonna be impacted and have non-conformance use. Almost the entire corridor will have non-conformity day one. So it's way more than just the fourteen that are gonna be taken completely and down to the ground.
Understood, and agree. And then, I guess the other, the other part to that was, if I remember correctly, when I was dealing with these types of issues well at the county, if the property was made non-developable through the subdivision regs, now in different code, but through the subdivision regs, then the property owner was either compensated wholly, as in, it's blank.
And that's the fourteen or seventeen, I've heard both numbers, that's the full taking of those properties.
Right.
That we're talking.
Because, but if our variance or our allowances allow those to be redone by same owner or potentially, you know, a new owner, then it's not something that the city would have to then share with that right-of-way cost, depending upon our contract with the state. So, you know, just getting into a little bit more from, again, my previous employment, so. Yeah, it kind of all depends. If we say that the new owner can't redevelop, then they're due their whole property taking, of which then that, that affects us more monetarily as a city, because I'm pretty certain we've got an advanced funding agreement for that right-of-way taking, and now we're paying eighty percent of that whole taking, as opposed to eighty percent of a piece of property, and now we're potentially left with, you know, vacant land all the way down five eighteen, until parts and pieces get bought up as a whole.
And I think the greater concern is, is post-project, we still have a business there, so the right-of-way was taken, they still have parking, they still have, but their front setback isn't compliant, their parking spaces aren't compliant. And all of a sudden, something happens to their building. What do they do? Do they have to then tear it down and build completely different, losing square footage, losing all of that? Or are we going to capture that to make sure that they can build back as-is? That's what this is talking about, and I'm gonna argue to be able to build back as-is.
Almost like a grandfathering, if you will.
Without grandfathering, correct. We've been told that we shouldn't probably grandfather the corridor, for obvious reasons. But, and there are gonna be cases where there's old strip centers, there's some gone there now, where, you know, owners have come in and just completely scraped, you know, and they're gone. So when those come in to redevelop, they're gonna have to go by the current code. And I'm okay with that. That's the reason why you don't want to just grandfather. But, and you will have some redevelopment along the way. I just want to make sure somebody's collateral doesn't get damaged in this, and they can't rebuild if they have a problem. I think Martin had something there.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to kind of step back a moment and realize that there's a couple of different conversations happening. There's a section of the UDC currently that talks about damage and potential loss and things like that that are well outside of anyone's ability to control. This is really about what happens when you have a nine-by-eighteen-foot parking space, and you're losing three feet of that. So that way, it's now a nine-by-fifteen-foot parking space. So, you know, our typical F-150 is gonna stick out into the drive aisle or into, you know, some other place. So what happens when that, that level of acquisition happens? And what trigger then do we then have? Some places are only gonna have a couple foot of landscaping, and it's not, it's not a huge hurdle to get back into full compliance. But other places, you know, definitely have a means and a desire to come back into conformance through either redevelopment of the property or through some small adjustment on the site. What level of adjustment are we okay with? And what level of adjustment are we good at saying, no, here's just the new standard that's gonna be applied for Broadway? Or here's the, what we're comfortable with allowing? And I think that's just to kind of reset the conversation, reset the subject. Because, you know, everyone's gonna be made whole, or as best as whole as we can be. And, you know, each of those negotiations is with the individual property owners. But from a city perspective, knowing that we're going to have a variety of non-conformities and a variety of buildings that have been developed over time, and maybe have ability to lose, lose is such a bad word there, but to have that non-conformity to it versus ones where, you know, parking is parking, and it's a defined space, and our cars unfortunately just aren't getting smaller. And so that becomes a more of a give-and-take, and at what point do we then say, no, okay, you've done this, and now you could, you know, let's say that they have additional parking spaces, and they're already meeting their minimum, but they're wanting to make those improvements. Okay, are they going to meet corridor overlay standards today? Or are we gonna reset to have a Broadway two that has a smaller landscape adjustment to it? So again, just kind of resetting the conversation to hopefully get us where we can have design workshop with some good input to move forward on.
I think it's just gonna take a section on it, it's gonna have to have some flexibility, and I do like that, if X, then Y. If you can't do that, then here's some scenarios. And why I think it's important on all this, again, is making sure that we have something that a property owner can glob onto, ten years from now, there's an issue. When, or twenty years from now, when none of us are in this room, and all of a sudden, something happens and they go, this issue was created this way by this. And I just want to make sure that that's captured, so. And again, I don't agree with just a blanket grandfathering. So I just want to make sure. So I think taking a stab at a UDC section, you know, with putting something there would be the start, and then we flesh it out as we move that forward, so.
And I don't think that should be, the addition to the UDC, not specifically for this Broadway expansion.
It's to any area that causes a non-conformance use through eminent domain.
Right.
Whether it's Tech dot or us.
We've seen examples on planning and zoning when somebody came in and they had to do replat, or do, I can't remember exactly what it was, but it was a larger lot, and then it didn't meet the certain requirement.
Lot requirement.
We should have a variance process for that at staff level, and then we can, we can hear it if the answer is no. Jennifer, you had one more thing?
I assume that these, I haven't looked at the seventeen tracks you were talking about, that would be fully taken? I assume that we are hoping that they'll get demolished and then redeveloped? Is that the plan, are they gonna set empty forever?
I think they're being, they're being taken in whole because of the impact. And so the road is there, they'll be demolished and nothing else built, because there's not enough. There may be, there may be one or two that have some additional property, but most of them, there's not additional property to develop.
Okay. So, I guess that probably is fine, but I was just wondering if there were a few of them that came up and they were, let's say that it's just like Martin said, and it's a parking lot, and the existing building's mostly there, but let's say they tear it down and they rebuild and they have to come in conformance. I think we need to look at the design criteria manual, especially the detention requirements. It'd be nice if Tech dot, I don't know if Tech dot is expanding any detention drainage from the expansion.
They are.
But why would they not take in that flow, or develop flow into that pond, so that they're not harmed? Because I don't, I mean, I know that probably these are mostly two, under two acres, but I just see that there's gonna be a problem with meeting detention criteria. Well, no, I said point two. If they're on Tech dot right-of-way, that's more the, a different method, and those rates are coming out really high, as far as the detention rate. So, I mean, has anybody, I think that's something we need to look at, or engineering here needs to look at, and work something out with Tech dot so that those tracks are developed in the future. If something happens, they're completely torn down, and they have to come back up to Tech dot or Pearland code, can they actually develop the property? Are they gonna be hindered by detention? That's it.
One last thing for me, I compare some of our discussion here to what I was thinking from the, I think it's the next page, and maybe it's a good segue, but the infill strategies. We have a lot of parcels that currently aren't deep enough for their current zoning to utilize and develop correctly. So some of this, we may be discussing here in this next section. But the same thing, they could fall into this category perhaps as well, some flexibility.
I think to answer Jennifer's question, I think it's, the difficulty is, you could maybe have some volume on some detention. Tech dot is creating some additional detention in the corridor. I think the problem's gonna be conveyance, because you may be over here, pond's here, how do you get it there? I think that, I think the issue's gonna be that.
Okay, we can move on.
Alright, we'll move on to redevelopment and infill. So some questions for you to consider, this is on page forty-four and forty-five of your workbook. Number one, what types of redevelopment opportunities would you like to see in underused areas of Pearland, and where? And then, do current zoning rules make it harder to build on vacant or underutilized properties? Next slide. So infill strategies for development refer to the planned use of vacant or underutilized land within already developed areas to create more housing, commercial spaces, or community amenities while maximizing existing infrastructure. Next slide. The goal for this topic is to promote cluster development on underused land to boost density with incentives for middle-market housing and more neighborhood amenities. To promote vibrant walkable mixed-use districts by maximizing use of infill sites, expanding uses and exploring compact development strategies for a connected pedestrian-friendly community. Next slide. So the key issues that we've identified so far. First, are existing requirements make infill development challenging? You have high parking minimums. Parking minimum requirements create less developable land. Detention requirements. Rosoria County detention requirements utilize vacant land for stormwater management as large open spaces. Minimum lot sizes. So minimum lot size requirements in the UDC make it difficult to develop smaller parcels, which is common in older neighborhoods or areas targeted for infill like Old Town. Next, large setbacks. Like minimum lot size requirements, large setbacks take up significant amounts of property that could otherwise be used to maximize buildable area. Another issue is the lack of by right infill. The UDC limits the opportunity for developers to proceed with projects that could comply with zoning codes that allow infill projects by right without needing additional approval. Next, zoning favors low-density, single-family new development. Many of the UDC zoning district standards encourage single-family, large lot development. And the final issue is land use categories in the matrix do not clearly define mixed use or infill projects. I'll open it up for comments or questions.
Is there recommendations behind that?
There is. You want to go ahead and jump into those?
Please do.
Okay. Our initial recommendations here are to offer fee in lieu or density bonuses. This allows developers to pay a fee instead of fulfilling a UDC requirement such as affordable housing, public amenities, or open space dedication. Density bonuses are zoning incentives that allow developers to build more units or floor space than normally allowed under zoning code for benefits like additional housing or public spaces. Next is redevelopment of unused parking. Incentivize redevelopment of underutilized surfing, surface parking areas. Also, implement cluster development, which is to consolidate residential areas to maximize neighborhood amenities like green space. Next is establish infill development standards, which would be standards for infill development that reinforce the character of existing developed areas and limit incompatible uses or adverse impacts on adjacent properties. Also align with stormwater best management practices or BMPs, which are to ensure detention requirements align with current best management practices for stormwater control and minimize the amount of space required for detention. This could mean smaller interventions scattered throughout the city along roadways, parks, roofs, buildings, and parking lots. And those could be things like rain gardens, bioswales, or plant or strips. They can help improve maintenance and landscape around detention facilities. And, um, also thinking about combining requirements. So allowing landfill areas to fulfill multiple purposes. As an example, a landscape, a detention area could be detention requirements and landscape as one example. So I'll pause here.
Over to the commission.
I would, I would just be leery that, that we, I, I, I like the, the, the option to, to have something count as a couple of things, but not all of them. It's like, oh, my detention counts as green space and this and this, and you don't, it's, it's too many, many cookies out of the cookie jar, so to speak, right? It's a few, but not all. Detention and flooding is a very, very touchy subject, especially when you're infilling. And yes, sometimes the last person to the sandbox gets the last toy, so to speak, or they, they get the most impact on them. We're dealing with Atlas 14, we're dealing with increased flooding. And so I would just be leery that our requirements don't necessarily put huge overdue burdens on the last remaining infill projects that would make the corridor complete, if you will. But, and then can we maybe get a, an example of what fee in lieu might be? Or, or do you have an example of where communities would use that money for? Because it didn't check the box. And so what are we going to do with the money that we got in lieu of? So we, we didn't, we didn't get the box checked, but we, we now have this pot of money that might go to what? As an example.
So one, uh, one example could be parkland dedication fees. Uh, so when you're building out a subdivision, you have the opportunity to build a park that meets city specifications. Uh, oftentimes people don't either have the space or want to utilize that space for additional lots. So it's easier just to pay the fee in lieu. So when you're thinking of that term and infill recommendations, you can use that as kind of a, an example.
I would comment, what's, what's classified as this type of property? Is there, do we have like a, like a classification? Is it anything under a half acre? I mean, what's the size of an infill? Because if we don't have that, we need to establish that for sure. And.
But I, I've always just, what we have left are tracks that are five to fifteen acres.
Five to fifteen?
That, I mean, that, that's what we've got sitting out here. You, you might have a few tracks that are larger than that or whatever, but.
So.
I think the infill is just, if you've got a five acre track and you wanted to develop it, what can you do with it?
Okay, so five acre track is, that's a good example because right now, City of Pearland has criteria of anything two to twenty acres. We had to run the small watershed and not to get into the nitty gritty details of that. Um, we ran an analysis for someone the other day. They were freaking out about how big their pond was. And their effective detention rate was 1.29 acre foot per acre. And that was of the whole track. And the other option, but this comes out high. The City of Pearland says point seven acre foot per impervious cover. It's not for the total. So this person had eight acres, they were only developing three or four acres. They didn't know what they were ever going to future develop the rest of the track. So it came up in comment. Do we have to include the entire track? Do they sell it off? Can they replat it? But 1.29 acre foot per acre is a really high rate. I know he's going to say something different because we just had this discussion. But, um, that's for an infill development, that's quite a bit. Um, they're usually, usually, I don't know that we always have the depth for it and those kind of rates we're seeing lift stations, stormwater lift stations. Do we want more of those? I don't know. So I think that's something that we need to look at. But that's the common complaint I'm seeing now as far as detention. If anything over two acres. That's it.
As for the comment that it be, you know, five to fifteen acres, in my mind, when I say infill, I'm thinking of even the, the onesies and twosies or, or the four, the four parcels outside of the wood development. I can't remember what the name is, north of, uh, the ninth grade center and, and I can't remember that neighborhood name, but.
Oh, yeah, Springfield and, and, uh, no, uh, Westwood.
Westwood. Outside of there, those, those parcels are not as developer, as developable friendly because the setbacks have changed. There's one on the corner of Walnut and Old Alvin, uh, adjacent to the multifamily. I'm sure when they had that parcel out, that met the requirements of setback and you could put a little office building there. Now you're just, you're just restricted somewhat. So infill for five and, and twelve acre parcels that are, that are strewn about, you know, along Roy Road, Garden O'Day, those kind of things. That's great, but I, I think we have another problem in that we have some of these smaller parcels that are left behind that, that's what I was saying, that meet very similar now to when Broadway gets expanded and you have too shallow of a lot. What can we do to help those get developed and get them on the tax rolls and, and have a usable building? So I, I'd like to allow staff, you know, the, the, to be creative, innovative, and a variance process, uh, to have the flexibility. Uh, examples, a higher density, maybe allowed for a partial, the, the cluster development. I know we already have that in the books. That's wonderful if we could utilize the cluster development. I know that helped us get a lot of developments when that first opened up. The zoning flexibility setbacks, lot size flexibility, and the variance process again. Thank you.
Counsel, questions, comments? So I, I, I'll piggyback on what Henry just said. I agree, uh, wholeheartedly with that. I had actually written down allow for more cluster plans. Um, and which, which just gives flexibility to the developer and the home builder. Uh, in this case, in, in most of those, uh, are going to be residential, uh, by nature. Uh, we set a density requirement. Here's your density requirement. Go build to the density requirement if you want to make them. Now, right now, our cluster plans are, haven't seen it in a while, but it typically have a minimum forty foot. We would, you could go down to forty. Do we want to keep that same? Do we want to make it lower? Where do we want to go? Clearly, the state is pushing smaller and smaller and smaller in order to get a, a more affordable product on the ground. And, and so what I want to be careful is, um, i-if, if somebody does come in and do a cluster, we can also have some comments around side requirements and those types of things. So maybe we have some conversations around density and lot size, but yet we're getting, uh, certain types of building materials as an offset. Uh, something else to look at is required to have a two-car garage. Are we at a point where certain developments that a one-car garage will fit? Will fit the development? Because one of the things that we, we said about, uh, the development over on McCard Road that came in is, you know, it's a, it's, it's a two-car garage with a box on top. That's all you're seeing. Is here's the garage, door is over here, you can't even see it, and then it's a box sitting on top. Again, one-car garage doesn't necessarily fit everything as well, but if, if you're going narrower and narrower and smaller and smaller lots, it's a two-car garage, all you see is garage. So do we, and again, this is a philosophical question here. Do we, you know, start allowing a single-car garage on certain sized lots? Um, you know, so those are, I think, uh, some of the things. I like large minimums versus reduced minimums that are on this page. I like that. Um, allowed for shared open space. For example, if you had a football field, a hundred and fifty by, by three hundred, and you put lots all the way around it and it's zero lot lines, you're at open space. So I, you know, the, the, you know, small lot and those types of things doesn't necessarily have to mean something that people wouldn't want to see or no open space or anything like that. But if we have those in our rules, developers and, and, and land planners will get creative and, and create something that people want. I like to develop live and work spaces, uh, especially for the Old Town site and some other areas. So I think that makes sense. And amenitize the detention. I agree with Trey. I don't, I don't think you can go to the well that it gets credit for everything. Um, but, but I, I like opening that up. I'll go back to the development that was on, uh, McCard Road that we saw. You know, it literally was a triangle in the corner. And, you know, what does that become over time? If they put that in the center of the whole thing and built the entire subdivision around it, that that was a focal point, it, it, it means a lot. Changes the scope, it changes the look, changes the feel. And we could give open space credits for that. We could give some amenity credits for that. And, and, and incentivize the developer to use it for amenities in the right way. Any other questions, comments?
Yes, uh, in, in looking over the infill as, as well as al-also on, on the text dot widening Broadway. It, it seemed like to me we still are lacking in needing something on tear down and rebuild, whether it's commercial or whether it's, um, private home, residential. I, I think we, we need to have something in. If you have a business affected by the text dot and, and they have a catastrophic, uh, event take place where they have to totally rebuild, well, the adjustments need to be made there as it was based, based on what the interference was with text dot. As well as a home, you have a home in an old subdivision that you found. And the, the codes for build line setbacks and this type of thing, we changed that from five to seven and a half o-over in green tea tariffs. However, there was new houses that were approved before the setback and the, uh, the lot line was changed. And cross street from my house. There, there's humongous house built with a five-foot setback or five-foot lot line and it is a big monstrosity. And my house is not little either, but it's built on a lot and a half. What I'm, but yet going through what I, I went through in the planning and the plating and getting the approval to build my house, we had to change even the drainage that it did not take in consideration, the drainage of the subdivision that we've changed the drainage. So I think even in the infill, we need to have something that, that is going to be a continuance, so, so to speak, of the neighborhood, of, of, of the commercial area. But if we change to all these new codes, then you, you're going to have a albatross. You're going to have one property looking one way, another property looking another way and another one. Because, uh, as events change. And I, I think we need to have something, whether it's in the infill or, or whether it's in, uh, tear down reconstruction. I think there needs to be something there that brings a commonplace to someone building and they don't have to change, uh, the entire world just because of, of new codes and, and new regulations. So I, I would like to see something like that, even in, in the infill, that there, there's a continuance of, of the zoning and of the planning and, and it's a product that doesn't look like an albatross.
Mr. Bowman?
Well, drainage was one of the things I was going to primarily talk about. When you start talking about reduced lot sizes, we had a project that came in here recently. They wanted zero lot lines on the perimeter and three-foot lot lines between their properties and, and drainage was a big concern for me then. And to your point, um, you start having infill in properties where the area is designed and draining and you start putting different drainage standards in because you have smaller lots, it becomes problematic. And, and I think ultimately with all of this stuff, what we're hearing, and, and it's one of the things I've heard about our UDC time and time again, is we need to have flexibility in the UDC. We can't write a code for every possible scenario that could potentially come up everywhere in the city in every unique situation. So it can't be such a rigid document that nobody can breathe. You know, staff needs to have some flexibility. We've got smart people that know what they're doing. Martin and Vance. You guys, you know, y'all know what, what, what's going on. We've got great people in our engineering department. We've got boards, we got ZBA, we've got planning and zoning, we've got council. I would, I'd like to see us not get so deep in the weeds on the UDC that we try to write something that fits everything somebody could possibly think of. There's just weird, unique scenarios that happen. And our current UDC really makes it hard to think outside the box.
Yeah.
So building in some flexibility in there where we can be creative in these product, in, in these different infill situations, or even with the, the expansion of five eighteen and the unintended consequences for those property owners. Open it up a little bit and make the UDC more flexible, not just this monstrosity that nobody can get out of. I think that all of these different topics that we've talked about ultimately come down to flexibility and the ability to apply some common sense and not just go by what's on the paper.
Good point. Move on, Claire.
Yes, sir. We have two more topics. I think we're just going to get started on parking, but we can tack these on to our next workshop. So this would be on pages forty-six and forty-seven of your workbook. Key questions include what types of parking strategies would be most appropriate for Pearland, like removing parking requirements in some areas or parking maximums? And two, how should the city balance parking requirements with other, with other policies such as green space requirements or future mobility options like bike infrastructure? Next slide. So parking requirements written decades ago are often outdated because they require too much parking, which could be better used to promote walkable, dynamic districts. Next slide. The goal on this topic is to explore. The goal on this topic is to explore shared use strategies and smart parking solutions to optimize parking efficiency, support and expand development opportunities, and improve accessibility. Next slide. Some of the key issues identified include lost potential for future development. Large parking lots and parking requirements stipulated in the UDC would create inefficiencies in the highest and best use of developable land, developable land for buildingable, buildable assets. Next, minimum parking requirements. The UDC currently regulates using minimum standards which may hinder infill and redevelopment potential in some parts of the city like Old Town. There's also lack of flexibility. Parking minimums promote rigid rules and requirements that may not be suitable for a diversity of businesses. As an example, boutique store or coffee shops versus grocery stores. Over stipulation by land use adds complexity and stringency that prevents a variety of businesses from adapting to growth over time. Parking regulations therefore have to be constantly updated to reflect new types of businesses or emerging industries. Next, no incentives for shared or structured parking. The current UDC does not explicitly provide incentives for shared parking or structured parking for mixed use development that would otherwise maximize developable land. Next, there's no support for future alternative modes of travel. Current parking standards in the UDC don't address emerging trends and needs related to bikes, ride sharing, EVs, and future public transit. There's also a lack of landscaping or stormwater provisions. The UDC doesn't clearly stipulate incentives for stormwater management or landscape features in parking lots that could prevent over reliance on large areas of detention or retention ponds. Next slide. So some of the potential recommendations include parking requirements, like exploring removing parking minimums in Old Town. We can explore parking maximums to prevent excessively large parking lots and reduce parking minimums for mixed use developments. There's also parking exemptions for small businesses. In order to encourage the growth of small businesses in Old Town Pearland, parking exemptions for certain types of businesses could be offered along key streets. There's also shared use, shared parking agreements, which would encourage the use of shared parking between neighboring businesses with complimentary hours, like a restaurant, um, that may peak in the evening while retail businesses peak during the day. We could require landscaping or screening for large lots. And then planning for future mobility. The UDC should guide the city towards a more sustainable, accessible, and efficient transportation system, accommodating future transportation trends in EV, bike, share, share ridership opportunities, and future public transit options. I'll pause here.
Commission?
Yeah, I would just say I, I think, um, parking requirements, um, are just random numbers. Not, if you look at the statistical history, at the history of how these numbers have come up, they've basically just been pulled out. And then the city next door says, what should we do? And they look at you and they take your numbers. It kind of goes around and around. And only in the last few years has there been actual study on some of this and it shows, I mean, I think on average, every one of our cars has eight parking spaces around Pearland, uh, for that. I'm not sure why we're putting that burden on our businesses. You know, we talk about the market and what the market bear, the market's not, you know, the average market that, that allows a business to be built is not going to allow a business to be built that can't handle its customer base. We need to give some credibility to that. I think the shared parking, um, tables, the shared use is looking at that i- is, is a good solution, is part of that. But I think, uh, overall, uh, just looking at more reasonable numbers, I can't, I don't know if I've ever seen a Walgreens that's had every, that's had a full parking lot. And then of course now you'll see HEB that never has enough, right? But you also see that if you go to HEB, you're going to park and you're going to get your car and you're going to drive through the parking lot to go to Academy. It's a part of its design requirements as well. So that, that same car has two or three spaces in the same parking lot. Um, and so I just say this is a very, um, you know, this is an easy win. This is a place that we can go in and we can, we can recapture some of that land to be developed properly, to be designed properly, and to get better value for the community as a whole.
Yeah, I hadn't agreed 100%. Um, I thought we as a planning and zoning commission under a lot of Krishnara's reign years and years ago, addressed some of this. And our thought was back then that it's very rare to see Walmart's parking lot full, very rare to see Home Depot's parking lot full, Lowe's, unless there's a hurricane. Yeah, granted, but I think we made a rule that if, as long as that parking lot wasn't full, you know, was it less than 90% or something like that, to where, to where it wasn't going to be full, but maybe three or four days out of the year, so be it. That, that's fine. That, that somebody will drive down the street and go somewhere else at that point. They won't go to Walmart for their Christmas stuff. They'll, they'll come back later maybe. Um, but we shouldn't dictate all that cement for that reason. And then also to benefit, if, if a business were to restrict their, uh, parking lot size and they had still that green space, they could park on that green space, um, to account for the overflow parking. We were going to encourage that. That was one of the things we talked about. Um, and then also as a, as a trade off, maybe it's to reward when you put that many trees there or trees in the parking lot. When you go to Lowe's, Home Depot, if you look where the cars are parked, there's a gap between the people that park in the shade way off by the Chick-fil-A, and I'm talking about the one in Silver Lake, as opposed to everybody close to the building. But people will park under the trees if they are allowed to grow and grow large enough. So, uh, but, but reward them, you know, maybe a 25% reduction in your maximum parking if you put some trees up there. Anyways, my thought.
I think there's, I think there's some incentives that can come out and, and, and encourage what we want with the parking. Um, at the same time, go to the town center day in, day out, even during Christmas, and you've got, you've got parking areas that probably haven't had a car, you know, truck parked in it in five years. And, and so how can we incentivize them to even recapture some of those areas? And maybe there's, maybe there's uses that they can do from a pad site and other stuff that actually make the town center better, you know, long-term. So I think we need to, we need to look at that. My only concern is if it gets too small. If, if it, what rules and regulations should we have in place? And, and we probably already have them now. Uh, and that is, you know, the parking is spilling over into the street. The parking is spilling over to an adjacent neighborhood or something of that nature. I, I just want to be, I want to be cognizant that if we, for example, remove, you know, minimums like it says here at Old Town site, but if we removed them all together, in the event we have the one off that parking is now inconveniencing neighbors, how do we deal with that? You know, and, and that's, that's going to be on the back end. And I know that's the exception, but we need to be aware of that. Um, parking maximums, I think, uh, is, I think all the potential recommendations here are ones that we need to be looking at. Um, you know, through, I, I, I questioned forcing somebody putting in EV stations. I know that that's something that's, that's out there and some people do. Again, I think that, I think the market, the landowner, the, the landlord is going to decide, uh, what customer base they're appealing to. So I'd be careful that we mandate that. Uh, certainly it's available. We, we welcome it, but I'd be careful to mandate it. Any other questions, comments?
I would say while we're looking at parking, I know you've got require landscape screening in here. Um, I, I'm, I hope that we're looking at our landscape requirements, especially for these large parking lots in general. Um, the HEB parking lot on Pearland Parkway is one that was mentioned previously. Uh, I, I know all of us have probably been in that parking lot and there's all this landscaping and it's beautiful and it's great, except when you try to leave the parking lot and you can't see cars coming from either direction because there's these big huge trees that we've required. And, and, and I don't know if our UDC required that or if that was their choice. I'm not saying where it came from, but I'm saying that's something that we definitely need to look at. I'm all for landscaping, but low level shrubs or something that you can see around. Cause I get, almost get in a wreck in that parking lot almost every day. Because you can't see cars coming when you're trying to cross to go to the gas, the gas pumps or whatever, uh, or just to leave the parking lot. So when we're talking about these large parking, parking areas or parking in general, but it usually is just in those large areas that have multiple properties along there and they have a roadway that's connecting from Hobby Lobby all the way down. And as you go, you've just got all these visual obstacles that are, that are dangerous. Um, so wherever that came from, how we can look at that within our UDC to account for life safety and traffic flow as well, not just look at how many trees do we have?
Anybody else? Mattel, did you reach for your?
Mayor Cole, how many, real quick, just a quick, uh, wanted to see if there is consensus. We've had conversation in the past, uh, about shared parking agreements and the requirement for those to go to P and Z. If, if staff thinks shared parking agreements make sense and the math math, is that, is there a consensus that that can be approved at the staff level? I mean,
I would say, yeah, I think so, yeah.
Just give them a variance if, if the answer is no.
Yeah, and if they say no, they would petition you.
Then the appeal would be to the P and Z. I like that.
Is that the, we have one more, so, I think.
Well, I know we are at 5:59. Um, we have the food trucks, um, topic, but we can save this for the next workshop.
That's good. I think we had good discussion, lively discussion, a lot of good topics. Can't wait for this, uh, UDC rewrite to be done. I think it'll be, uh, good in the long run. So with that, uh, we'll move to adjournment at six o'clock.